Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the City Council, Tuesday, February 28th, 2025. If we could please have a roll call by our Clerk, Annie Meredith.
Thank you. Mayor Watkins is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Dykens?
Here.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmembers Daley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Michael Bell of the Kingman Nazarene Church. If you'll please approach. Everybody, please stand if you are able.
Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Almighty God, we give thanks and praise to you this day for all your mighty works, your loving, good, and gracious to us. Thank you for creating and sustaining us throughout our lives. Thank you for this council and the work that they do. We pray that your wisdom and guidance be given to them this day as they seek the further operation of this city. May every decision be one that is glorious. Have your hand of protection on every city worker this day, and let this be one of rejoicing because of the things that happened today, decisions that prosper this city and its inhabitants. Be with us now. Bless us, Almighty God. In the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First agenda item that we have is appointments, Clean City Commission appointments. The Clean City Commission currently has two vacancies with a term ending on December 21st, 2028. Staff has received two city resident applications from Dana Boe and Mike Blair, as well as two county resident applications from Mary Ann Salem and Melissa Gibson. Only one county resident position is available. The applications have been reviewed by council liaison, mayor, and staff. Residency and voter registration status have been verified per ARS 38-431.03A1. The City Council may enter into executive session to review the commission applications. Counsel discretion. Counselor Ward, I believe you're the liaison to this commission? Does council have any discussion on the applicants? And if council wishes to go into executive session, I'll also entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We'll be right back. We want to thank you all for being so patient with us. All right. Coming out of executive session, I will entertain a motion to appoint two vacancies with a term ending on December 21st, 2028, to the Clean City Commission.
I will make a motion that we appoint Dana Boe and Mary Ann Salem to the two open seats.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Our next is awards and recognition, a proclamation for Women Making History that I will read. Whereas, American women from all walks of life have improved their communities and our nation, standing resolute in the face of adversity and overcoming obstacles to realize their full measure of success. And whereas, American women play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life. Beyond serving as a vital part of the labor force, American women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every progressive social change movement, securing their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, and contributing to movements which secure the rights of people of all races, classes, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, we honor and carry forth the legacy of women who have shaped our nation as we teach our daughters to persevere through obstacles and inspire them to reach for their highest aspirations and achieve true quality. Now therefore, I chair Samley for Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of March to be designated as Women Making History Month, and specifically designate Sunday, March 2nd, 2025, as Women Making History Day. And in doing so, urge all citizens to join me in honoring the history and contributions of American women and the important roles that they have played in the growth of our nation, state, and in our city. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal, signed by Ken Watkins, Mayor, and attested by Annie Meredith, our Clerk. So with that, I will ask Representative from Women Making History, Betsy Parker, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Well, we thank you.
Please approach if you could come to the podium. So the people online...
I have a loud voice. I talk PE.
People online can hear you now.
Sorry about that. Thank you again for your time, and I would also like to thank all of you for your service to our city. It means a lot to us, and we invite you to the ceremony because Cherish is going to be one of our recipients this year, and then she'll be the third person up front that has received that award. And I would love for the board to come forward and for us to have your proclamation. Thank you so much.
All right. Counsel, if you'll join me up front, we'll have a picture.
Sorry. You didn't ask. Where's your phone? Okay. You can tell. Pat, you want to get on here?
I'll stand here. You're not going to take it.
Yeah, I was going to say, where's our director?
Can I get you on this side? On the other side of Jamie?
Right. Oh, thank you.
We'll put this with our archives.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I do have full hand. Thank you. Yes, sir.
If I may just let you know, the mayor is in on the call, so he's logged in.
Oh, welcome, Mayor Watkins. All right. We'll move on to item number three, Call to the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Annie, are there any call to the public requests?
Vice Mayor, we do not have anybody that wishes to address council this evening.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Item number four. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counselors, does anyone have anything they wish to remove from consent? Counselor Dykens?
D, E, F, and G.
All right. D, E, F, and G. Counselor Ward? Aye? All right. So we are removing D, E, F, G, and I. I will entertain a motion to approve items A, B, C, H, J, and K. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We will start with item D. Counselor Dykens?
Can you read that for me?
Yes, I will. Thank you for the reminder. Authorization to purchase a new trailer-mounted hydroexcavation unit for water operations. The Public Works Wastewater Division is seeking council's approval to purchase a new trailer-mounted hydroexcavation unit in the amount of $295,012.80 from Empire CAT utilizing the City of Tucson Omnia Contract #212816-01, a cooperative purchasing agreement. This purchase will be procured from the Water Operations Fund and was approved in the fiscal year 2025 budget. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Dykens?
Basically, I've got the same questions for D, E, and F. Basically, when is the delivery date expected? Is there any potential delays due to either chassis or parts or equipment that is on backorder? And then, if there are delays, is there any expected increase in the price or is the price guaranteed?
Okay. I believe we have Kealan.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. To your question, Councilman Dykens, the delivery date on the backhoe and the dump truck are available as we speak, so we can take possession of those as soon as we cut them a PO. Of course, that comes with your approval. And the delivery date of the hydroexcavation trailer-mounted unit is scheduled to be here, obviously, before July 1st. We wanted to ensure that because otherwise I would need to roll money over into next fiscal year's budget. And then, to your other question, the prices are guaranteed, and like I mentioned earlier, with your guys' approval tonight, we will cut CAT Empire a PO as early as probably next week.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize to purchase a new trailer-mounted hydroevacuation unit for water operations.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I read F and G now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Authorization to purchase a new dump truck for wastewater operations. The Public Works Wastewater Division is seeking council's approval to purchase a new dump truck in the amount of $252,994.21 from Empire CAT utilizing the City of Tucson Omnia Contract #212816-01, a cooperative purchasing agreement. This purchase will be procured from the Wastewater Fund and was approved in the fiscal year 2025 budget. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Dykens?
I'll just make a motion to accept F, the authorization to purchase a new dump truck for wastewater operations.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Vice Mayor, you forgot E.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Concur.
I'll go back to E.
That's right. I missed it.
Carl.
Well, I was about to say so.
All right. Item E, Authorization to purchase a new backhoe for water operations. The Public Works Division is seeking City Council's approval to purchase a new backhoe in the amount of $163,981.34 from Empire CAT utilizing the City of Tucson Omnia Contract #212816-01, a cooperative purchasing agreement. This purchase will be procured from the Wastewater Fund and was approved in the fiscal year 2025 budget. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Dykens?
I would make a motion to accept E, Authorization to purchase a new backhoe for water operations.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. G? All right. Authorization of Solid Waste Telematics Contract. The Solid Waste Division is seeking City Council's approval to enter into a three-year contract with RouteWare Incorporated for telematics management solution for a total of $72,938.80. The system provides vehicle tracking, route completion monitoring, service and incident verification, and other detailed reporting, which will improve efficiencies in the program. The RouteWare Management Solution includes hardware, software, databases, and other devices and equipment to measure, store, manage, and transfer data from field operations. The Solid Waste Division budgeted for implementation of a telematics system for 10 refuse trucks. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Dykens?
I can make this probably pretty easy. My question is, before I took this seat on council, the city purchased a big software packet that was capable of doing a bunch of different things for a bunch of different departments and divisions. Does that software packet have the capability of doing what this request is, or is this a complete, separate software need?
Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Dykens and members of the council, this is a different need. Several years ago, we were able to implement, this is basically a GPS and camera system on our cart buses. That was grant-funded. We've been able to utilize that to streamline routes, a lot of things that we talked about in the previous discussion on, you know, whether we can tell if somebody's overfilling those cans, or, you know, we'll be able to monitor that out in the field. We'll be able to do dispatching if we get calls back. And a big part of it, from our point of view, is the safety side. When it comes to accidents or incidents out in the field, we'll have video verification of what those causes may have been.
Any other questions? Counselor Savage?
Make sure I got the green light on. Should we hold off on this until we get the actual trash increase put off?
Well, this...
Or does this include part of that?
Yeah. This was factored into the previous rate adjustment on solid waste.
And when are we planning on increasing that? Or has that been totalized yet?
I don't.
Manager Washington?
Councilman Savage, we'll be bringing that back with our rate study. That'll be in March, the second meeting in March.
But that's going to be included in that?
Well, this was included in the last adjustment and the rates.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor, make a motion to accept G, Authorization of Solid Waste Telematics Contract.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. On to item I, Approval of Utility Cut Patching Proposal Change Order. On August 6th, 2024, the council approved a proposal from McCormick Construction Company for asphalt patching of water leak repairs. Additional repairs were identified, and the attached change order for $67,588.2 covers an additional 1,834 square feet of patches. The original contract was for $156,802.74, and the change order will bring the total contract price to $224,390.76. This will be paid from the Water Capital Renewal Fund. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Ward?
Yeah. Didn't we approve a patcher, a spray patcher, so that we could do our own patching?
So the spray patcher... Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Councilmember Ward, we did approve, or you did rather, a spray patcher. A spray patcher is primarily used on prep for, ahead of the chip seal instead of doing hot patch, cut, and repair. Speeds those up a lot. We have experimented or tried to use that in utility cut patching. The depth, and it's an emulsion, it's different than hot mix, but it doesn't set up and it can rut. So we do hot mix repairs. So we're still making repairs with our hot mix with our crews. The problem that we have, even with the spray patcher and the hot mix truck that we use currently, is the volume of patches coming in outweigh the amount that we can repair. And so, this was actually part of the last contract we did. We found additional patches that we had told you were trying to get buttoned up, and so that's what this represents.
So, we have the equipment. We just don't have the labor to get the, to patch our own patches. I'm just asking.
Yeah. No, no. It's a great question. So we actually have the labor. We have people out doing those almost daily, doing utility cut patching. The bigger issue is just the volume that's coming in versus the one crew that's on those. We receive more patches than we can complete in a day at this point.
And this is mostly water?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I got.
All right. Any other questions from council? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the utility cut patching proposal change order.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item number five, Old Business. Considerations for the Programming of Opioid Settlement Monies. At the July 16th, 2024 council meeting, staff provided an update on the nationwide settlements involving opioid litigation against multiple pharmaceutical distributors, pharmacy chains, and manufacturers. The settlements total close to $45 billion, and Kingman is expected to receive anywhere from $1.9 million to $2 million of the settlements over an 18-year period. Uses of these monies are restricted for opioid abatement strategies. These strategies fall within areas of treatment, prevention, training, leadership, collaboration, and research. Staff is seeking council direction on how to best use the city's opioid settlement monies. Welcome, Ms. Moline.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor and council members. Give me just a second to get this open for you. Oh, I forgot. Share it back through the Zoom. No, you can do that. What do you tell me, share it to? Thank you. All right. All right. So, back in July, we actually talked about some of the opioid settlement monies and how they could possibly be spent. We talked about how much we might receive over the next 18 years or so. And at the conclusion of that meeting, staff was asked to do a little bit more research, look into possibly some of the facilities that are already here, and possibly building a facility and hiring a third party to manage those operations. We were also asked to look at and talk to Revive specifically. And so, we have met with Revive Behavioral Health staff, and we have researched some of the costs of, well, not really the costs, but the availability of facilities currently, and wanted to bring back to you our findings, and then ultimately, some of the considerations of how we could program the opioid settlement monies. So I'm going to start with the background, just to make sure that everyone remembers how we got these monies, and that is, since 2021, nationwide settlements have been reached to resolve opioids litigation that was brought on by states, local governments, against pharmaceutical distributors, and pharmacy chains. And that number just continues to grow year over year. The settlement agreements currently have varying terms that range between $600 million to $18 billion. And the timeframe for those settlements are anywhere from five years to 18 years. And the state of Arizona and its counties and cities and towns entered into a memo of understanding that would lay out the framework and how those monies would get allocated. So basically, the state receives them, sends them to the counties, and then the county distributes them to us. The settlements and the state of Arizona have certain uses that they are requiring the monies to be spent on. This is a very high-level categorization of those approved uses. So basically, it's for treatment, it's for prevention, and things such as training, research, first responder spending, leadership planning, and coordination. And it is important just to note that we are required to report to the state on a quarterly basis, while we do it through the county, who then reports to the state on our behalf of how these monies are being spent, to ensure that we're in compliance with those approved uses. So, we believe that by the end of the settlements, that we will collect about $2 million. To date, we've collected $643,000. And then you'll see in the table how we expect to collect the monies and the amounts we expect to collect over the next 15 years, basically. So, one of the questions that Councilwoman Daley actually brought up in July was, why don't we look at building a facility and finding a third party to potentially run it? And so, what we found was, we found that there is Revive Behavioral Health that is already offering inpatient recovery and rehabilitation, and there is also Hickory Treatment Center that is offering the same. City staff actually met with each of the administrators of those organizations and toured the facilities, and we found that Hickory Treatment Center that is already open, they have the capacity for more enrollees, basically, than the beds that they are offering. So they are not at full capacity. And while Revive has not quite opened yet, they have, I'm actually going to ask Kristin Ott to come up and speak a little bit about her facility, but they have ample room as well for our community and to be able to serve those in need. So, we found that there are some of those services already available, and certainly, they're the experts on all of this. And with that, if council is amenable to it, I'd like to ask Kristin to come up and share a little bit about what her center provides or will be providing very shortly.
You're welcome. Thank you, Vice Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me. Also, thank you for letting me have a few minutes of your time this evening. Again, my name is Kristin Ott. I am the CEO for Revive Behavioral Health. Revive Behavioral Health was organized in November 2019 and does provide behavioral health residential services in Mojave County. We currently operate a 90-bed residential facility in Bullhead City, and we're currently in the middle of opening a 46-bed facility here in Kingman. I think I saw some of you there touring, so thank you for coming out and supporting that opening. We had our open house, as I mentioned, a few months back, and we just received our final access insurance approval last week, which is what we've been waiting for, to make sure we have all the access approval for opening. And I mentioned to Tina that we're actually getting ready to prepare to open in a few days. So we've had our facility there, ready, probably sitting for about six months now, just waiting for all the approvals through the city, the county, the state, and ultimately, the insurance so we can bill appropriately. Personally, I've worked in healthcare industry in Kingman for 19 years now, and I'm dedicated personally to providing a quality healthcare services to those living here in Kingman. As a whole, Revive Behavioral Health leadership team provides a vast amount of experience in the operational and medical aspects of the field, which is important to ensure a longstanding presence within this community. Since inception, Revive's goal has been focused on making a positive impact on our community by providing quality behavioral health residential services for those struggling with addiction and the co-occurring disorders that come with those addictions. This will in turn have a positive impact on other local entities within our community that have long felt the impacts due to these struggles. And some of those entities we can discuss are with the police department, the fire department, the jail system, and the costs that incur with these calls to the struggles that are happening in our community. Since opening in November 2019, we took our first... for all the approvals through the city, the county, the state, and ultimately the insurance so we can bill appropriately. Uh, personally, I've worked in healthcare industry in Kingman for 19 years now and I'm dedicated personally to providing a quality healthcare services to those living here in Kingman. As a whole, Revive Behavioral Health leadership team provides a vast amount of experience in the operational and medical aspects of the field, which is important to ensure a longstanding presence within this community. Since inception, Revive's goal has been focused on making a positive impact on our community by providing quality behavioral health residential services for those struggling with addiction and the co-occurring disorders that come with those addictions. This will in turn have a positive impact on other local entities within our community that have long felt the impacts due to these struggles. And some of those entities, um, we can discuss are with the police department, the fire department, the jail system, and the costs that incur with these calls, um, to these, uh, the struggles that are happening in our community. Since opening in November 2019, we took our first patient in December 2019 and we have had 1,500 individuals complete our program here in Mojave County and transition from our program. And we have since that time, uh, have 500 in our alumni group. So they come back as, as they can weekly and we have the alumni to provide additional resources and support. Revive Behavioral Health's mission is to create an environment of healing that ensures safety, support, stabilization with the use of evidence-based treatment outlined by the International Association of Trauma Professionals, the American Society of Addiction Medicine, and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, also known as SAMPA. Revive Behavioral Health strongly believes in community partnerships and relationships and understands those partnerships are even more important here in a rural area. Thank you again for allowing a few minutes to introduce our organization and we just appreciate having the time and being considered for this potential opportunity to help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Kristin while she's up? No? All right, thank you so much.
She may know, or Tina. As far as the city goes, Rusty, you may know this a little more, or you may know Kristin, as the percentage or the amount of people that were having to house as opposed to the city buying a building and supporting the entities that are out there already? We don't have any numbers? Well, that didn't help.
Manager Walsh?
If I, thank you Vice Mayor. I was just wanting to see if I could clarify, as far as housing, you mean for, for folks in treatment or?
In treatment, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we have a number. I, I know Kristin's got, uh, maybe you can share the numbers that you got, at least with it, with what you're doing down in Bullhead and what you anticipate here.
Yeah, so.
You gave some numbers, but.
I, you know, I don't have those numbers with me. What I can tell you is, is with these residential services, what we haven't had in Kingman is residential. So, and what I mean by that is we, we're partners with Mojave Mental Health, Southwest Behavioral, West Care. We work directly with Taros, all these other entities, um, that offer wonderful outpatient services. They offer wonderful services, but what they don't offer is residential. So what happens is, is we work closely with these entities, they assess these patients, they send us information so we know safely if we can take these individuals on and meet their needs, um, in a very, um, outlined structured, structured environment. Um, if they are approved to come in, then at that point, we are average length of stay is usually 90 days. So they come with us, we've had them for 30 days, we've had up to 150 days. Uh, so it is residential structured program and then after that, we work to find placement for them. So if they're not going back home, they need assistance, we work with other entities such as, um, the few, there's, we need more resources when it comes to sober living. Um, we work with Oxford, Oxford House. Um, there's a few entities out there that we are working with, but there, there is some struggle still at times with discharge planning with sober livings. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Ms. Moline?
Thank you so much Kristin. All right, so with that, um, city staff has put together some ideas for you to consider as far as programming the opioid settlement monies over the next 15 years. And a majority of the monies really putting those through some sort of grant program to give to organizations such as Revive to allow them to sustain and expand. Um, and so of the $2 million that we have, we think that one of the ideas could be about 1.5 million dollars in a grant program and I'll, I'll talk a little bit to that on the next slide. Also, funding our walk away from drugs, so making it bigger and better every year, better outreach, more outreach. So it's about $5,000 a year. Uh, training for our police and for our police officers and our fire personnel. And then also maybe a motivational speaker for our youth, so working with the schools, partnering with them, and teaching them early on about opioids, right? The use and how to prevent, how to prevent them from getting involved in them. So, um, that basically takes up the $2 million, just an idea. As far as the grant program, Mojave County actually has a grant program that we were working with them on to better identify any of the lessons that they've learned, any of the successes that they've had, so that if this was the direction that council wanted to go, we could incorporate all of that into our grant program. So first and foremost, we would want to issue a formal solicitation and get as much interest as possible. And of course whoever, whoever applies for that grant would need to be able to identify how they're going to use those monies, certainly to expand and sustain, right? And then they'll have to put together a budget on what's going to be needed for that and they're going to need to provide quarterly reports to us. Uh, we will award it potentially to multiple applicants. The county does that and they've said that that has worked out really well and it would be based on some sort of evaluation scoring. We were thinking maybe a couple of tiers of awards, so maybe two major, um, may, two major grant awards of up to $100,000 and then maybe four awards of a smaller amount, up to $25,000. And because we have over $600,000 right now in this fund, we are thinking of fronting some of those grant monies right now and then as time goes on, those amounts will certainly be a little less. We would want to do a two-year grant cycle so that the administration and the application process for those who want to apply, that it's not cumbersome, right? So they can work on this program for two years before needing to reapply. And we would want to do it on a reimbursement-based basis. That would ensure that we get the reporting that we need. Until we get it, they would not be reimbursed those monies. So, um, just, just some ideas.
Yes. Um, I appreciate everything that you've put into this and I feel bad about, uh, asking this question because it's a little, um, outside of what you've just talked about grant-wise, but I've been worried about the Jerry Ambrose Center and the grant, um, the CDBG grant that we had approved for them, now it's on hold. And I, um, couldn't help but wonder if we couldn't use some of these monies to replace that grant if, if it doesn't end up coming through so they could finish their building. They do offer, uh, drug, um, or they offer services for veterans who are addicted. Um, and so I, I just wonder if there's a possibility of maybe using it for that instead or part of, part of it.
So I would say very likely. I know that the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Center did receive some of Mojave County's monies when they applied for the grant program. So I would imagine that, um, our criteria is going to be very similar. So even if we didn't, even if they didn't go through the grant program, I think that, that these monies would be allowable for that purpose. If I can just share though, as far as the grant, the CDBG grant for them, I don't expect that those monies are going to go away. Um, it's not, it's not some of the initiative that the new administration is, is trying to pull back on. Uh, so I do think that we're going to get those monies. I just think it's going to take some time and to get through the course. Um, now, that's just me and what do I know, right? But, uh, but certainly I think that those monies would qualify for the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Center as well. So.
And I think, I think that they were hoping to receive that money soon. So that's part of my concern is that now we're holding up the completion of their building and their services. So is there a way to, um, kind of keep this in the back of our minds that maybe a portion of this would go to them sooner rather than later since we have the funding now to help them out if, if they were amenable to that and interested?
Absolutely. I can share as far as where we are in the progress of that project. We still haven't issued a formal solicitation for the construction of the building yet. We've been, we've held off. We were going to issue it earlier in February. We can certainly, and I'm going to ask Carl if this is okay, we could issue the formal solicitation with language that states something to the effect that if the monies, if we don't receive those monies, then.
Subject to appropriation.
Yes, exactly. So maybe we can start at least that process, get through that three-month process, and maybe we'll have some more information by then too, from the administration.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, you bet.
Vice Mayor, thank you. And, and thank you Councilwoman Staley. Uh, I, I think that's a good point to, to, to bring up as far as, you know, helping them continue on. One concern I would have is if we're, we're, we're moving the money in different directions, um, while this could go towards the Jerry Ambrose, those CDBG funds would not be able to go towards this program. So I, I think I want to be, we want to be careful about how that works out. So, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was going to be my question, if we're going to reappropriate funds to like projects, I guess, is what I was asking. Um, any other questions for Tina?
I have one more slide.
All right, you can carry on.
Okay, thank you so much Vice Mayor. So the next steps would be for council to provide some sort of direction on the use of those monies and it can be all of the programs that were mentioned, none of the programs that were mentioned, a varying, uh, number of programs with different amounts. And then staff will implement those directives and then bring back to you on an annual basis how those programs are working and if maybe something needs to change. Um, and with that, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from council?
If I may, Vice Mayor?
Uh huh.
I just wanted to, to really, uh, give kudos to Tina on this project. You know, in, in looking at the opioid settlement, you know, the intent of that settlement is to address the, the addiction and the, the issues that have been brought forward because of, of the, the opioid issues. Um, really the approach that Tina and her team has taken is one that, that actually addresses the issue at a root level. You know, working with, with Revive and Hickory, i- it's working to help change those folks rather than just, you, you know, in, in not saying that one, one way of doing it or another is, is better, but a, a lot of agencies have focused that funding towards enforcement or, or these other things, which, you know, it becomes that revolving door where, where I think this, this approach here really helps, you know, address that root of that problem. So I just wanted to point that out and give kudos to Tina and her team. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Thanks, Manager Walsh. Uh huh, go ahead.
I'm just out of curiosity, uh, is Catholic charities part of this program?
So Catholic charities did. They were awarded money through the Mojave County, uh, grant program. So again, they'll be able to apply and, um, and potentially be awarded money too.
Yep. Welcome. So I had a question in the grant process. Who reviews those grants and who, uh, decides who gets those grants?
So the council will ultimately make the final, this Vice Mayor, thank you so much for your question. Um, the council will ultimately make the decision on the awards. As far as who's going to score and evaluate, um, I actually talked with the health, Melissa Palmer, who is the health director at the county, on who did they use to sit in on their evaluation panel? And there were several people within the health department, so I would maybe recommend Melissa Palmer. Um, I, Captain Don Bishop has a program, uh, that addresses opioids and I would maybe think of bringing him in. I would certainly want our police chief to be in on it. Um, and those are the few that have, that I've thought of off the top of my head, but certainly those who deal with this, right, should sit on the evaluation panel.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to commend you. Um, it wa, it was a great presentation. You could tell that there was a lot of thought, reaching out to the community and interviewing, uh, the treatment centers, I think was a fantastic idea. Um, I'm, I'm so glad that you were able to, uh, visit with them and, and create that bridge between the city and them and we can, we're all work together, um, towards hopefully eradicating eventually this, this terrible addiction. So I want to thank you because the, the presentation was very good.
Thank you very much Vice Mayor. And it was a great experience for Manager Walsh and I and the police chief and fire chief too. So we appreciate them opening their doors and letting us come in and meet with them.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments?
Correction.
Direction? Direction for Ms. Moline?
Yes, please.
I personally like the, uh, breakdown as they presented.
All right. I do as well. Um, I think, um, to Counselor Staley's point, we, we should definitely, um, explore. I have been concerned about those monies as well, but if, if we can't replace those CDBG funds, you know, if, if, if there's an issue, then I, I'm not in favor of, of doing it that way, but it's something that we need to definitely consider. And, and I like the grant opportunity, uh, for whomever to apply and be scored, so, um, that I would like to continue in this direction. Anybody else?
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you so much. Very, very much.
Thank you. All right, we have no new business?
Could we have a motion and a, to just, I guess, basically as presented?
I think, uh, Counselor Walker?
I will make that motion to move forward with as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we have no new business. Uh, moving on to department reports, Mojave County Lytec Housing Presentation. Uh, Manager Walsh?
Thank you Vice Mayor. Uh, we have Michael Smith, the Community Services Director for Mojave County here to, uh, provide information on the Lytec housing program.
Welcome Mr. Smith.
Vice Chair, um, Council, uh, pleasure to be here. Uh, so, so really we're going to talk tonight about Lytec. Uh, it's something that has really started upticking in Mojave County, uh, but it's not new by any, uh, imagination. Uh, it's been a program since 1980s. Uh, it's been very successful, uh, in regards to new developments, uh, within the county as well as the country. Um, I'll go ahead and go through the slides. Uh, so affordable housing, right? Nothing new, uh, in Mojave County. Uh, it's something that's been on everybody's mind. Uh, we did a housing study, uh, a year ago, uh, in September of 23. It was completed and presented to the board of supervisors. A lot of interesting things came out of that, uh, touching on those when you think of affordability. Uh, one of the things that we saw here in Mojave County is the, the vacancy rate is less than 2%, all right? So 2%, not very much vacancy. And then one of the things that came out of the housing study as well is, is the, is the, really the, the pressure, uh, that's placed upon, uh, the, the upper levels and the lower levels, which then in return is, is the crunching effect. What I mean by that is if you look at people that come into Mojave County, high-end rentals, very few, right? Low affordable rentals, very few. So everybody's fighting for that middle, right? So that increases all the, it increases the rents quite a bit. And those are one of the things that, that really came out of the housing study, uh, that, that we've thought was, uh, very apparent, uh, and a need. And, and then just affordable housing, right? So what housing could be built or affordable for people? And then when you look at what happened with the interest rates, I, I don't have to go down that road, but you know, you can take homes that were affordable at once for a lot of community members, uh, that did change. Just trying to give a backdrop of, of the Lytec and the different things as we go so I can present the whole picture, uh, for the council. So when we talk about affordable housing in the county, this is what we use for affordable housing and, and to measure, uh, where we're at for our, our program. So when we're talking about what is affordable housing, for us in the county, we say 80% of area median income, right? And then for, for workforce, we're going to say 80% to 120%. And then we talk about what is out there just for, for the general. We would just consider that the market rate, whatever that would be that the market would So I, I wanted to go through this. This is kind of getting in the meat and potatoes of, of, of where we're going here. So when you think of Lytec, um, one of the most important things to remember is that to become a Lytec developer, if somebody would want to go in the building Lytec or to be a developer, you got to go through a program through the state, right? Through the state of Arizona. And so every single year normally, or every year they put it out, it's called the Qualified Allocation Plan. So the Qualified Allocation Plan is what the developers use to decide how they're going to go ahead and, and facilitate applying for the grant. So what they do is it's a scoring sheet and they have to say, I'm going to have my development do this, 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 and this. And part of those things that are required is where's it located, right? How many units are there? What's going to be the, 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 the market mixed rate? Uh, what does that look like? So you can see the percentages on here of, of 20%, of 50% area income rate. So there's a lot of different things that go into that Qualified Allocation Plan. The reason I'm sharing that is we're a little late in the game, uh, for this, for this allocation round to, to make that happen. Um, and even if, even if we weren't late in the game, uh, for Mojave County, uh, it would be very difficult. And even if we weren't late in the game for Mojave County, it would be very difficult in regards to the way the Qualified Allocation Plan is set up currently. Currently, it favors more of the metro areas in the southern part of the state in regards to the way that would come out for the Qualified Allocation Plan. Speaking to several developers that have built here already in Mojave County, in Bullhead as well, they didn't put an application in last year, they wouldn't put an application in this year for Lytec in Mojave County because one of the things that's very difficult is you, there's four really criterias that you got to meet that make it work. One, needs to be in a census tract, right? So there's certain census tracts that HUD puts out that says, if you're in this area, right, we're going to support the Lytec program. In addition to that, it would be a redevelopment zone. So if somebody says, all right, I want to do a redevelopment of this area, and so the city or the county, wherever that land would be, says, we're going to redevelop this area. And so with each of these, what I'm mentioning is you get points, right? And at the end of the day, for the Qualified Allocation Plan, they total up those points, and the points are what they are, right? So there's no changing that. The other thing that comes into it is that the city, the state really wants to make sure that they see the cities and local municipalities have skin in the game, so they require a loan. So if you put a loan in, and it could be the terms that whatever the city would set, then that would move forward. Or if the city or municipality would lease land to a developer, they would also qualify for points. If you don't do those four things, or if you're not within those points totals, you're not going to get a scoring total in regards to competing with people further down state. So that's why the developer said, look, Mike, if we do this, it's going to be really hard to make it work. So I kind of wanted to preface that with where I was going. And to say, we have an opportunity as we move forward to really make a difference. If this is what I say we, I'm saying Mojave County, the council, the residents of Mojave, as well as the rest of the state, because they're going to give an opportunity at a later date to speak on it. This slide here, I just really want to put this up. This is something that we did for the housing study, and there's something really neat. If you haven't had a chance, I actually had the privilege to work with Tim's office in putting this together. So if you go on Mojave County's website, go to Community Services, you can go to our page there, and then within that, you can actually find areas within your city that we actually identified as Lytec. So it would be areas that you should identify if somebody was wanting to build a Lytec development. These would be the parcels that you'd want to look at, and they're already identified because we're looking at where was it located for shopping center? Where was it located for the public library? Where was it located for the pharmacy? So all of those things, schools, parks, all of those things tie in because that also goes into the Qualified Allocation Plan for points, is where I was saying that. So you can find that information on our webpage or in the housing study if you haven't had a chance to see that. This is, and so when we think of Lytec, right, there's two different programs that you can do. You can do the 9%, which is very competitive, very competitive, and there's only normally half a dozen or somewhere around 12 dozen awards, and they set that up half rural, half metro. So it's one of each for a developer. So developer can't say, all right, I'm going to come in and do six metros, right? No, they have, they do one metro, they have to do one rural. So that's the way that's set up. But the point where I was going here is there's always the 4% bonds as well. So if you decided that the Lytec wasn't something the way you wanted to go, you could always look at a 4% development as well, and that process could be moved forward too. So this is the part I wanted to touch on. So these are going to be upcoming meetings this month, and these will be very important if the council or residents of Mojave or anyone else wants to be a part of this, is that you can register for these. And what the state does is basically they're sounding sessions, right? So they bring people in, and they listen to what the developers are going to say, and they're going to listen to what the community is going to say. And so there's just different focus groups that they go through and really explain all these different things. And so while I'm talking about this, right, so when you look at the Qualified Allocation Plan, is it still possible this year to do it? It's possible, but you would need to find a developer that would come in and aggressively work with the city or with some local organization that wanted to do it, and then put that forward, right? Because there's a lot of things that have to go. If, when you submit your plan, you got to say, all right, this is where we're going to put the property, the summary units are going to be on the property, so forth and so on. But the important part is to think about the Qualified Allocation Plan with these meetings, right? We'll be able to speak and talk about why they're important. So one of the things, looking at, the council will have to look and take upon, it's working with your economic development and the city managers, is really to say, when we go through the Qualified Allocation Plan, how does that best serve the city of Kingman? And what does that look like? One of the things that you may find is when you look at the properties that we have identified through the county, through the Lytec program, that they might not be within the exact ratio of where you want to be for the percentage. So when you think of all the things that I listed out, the hospital, the pharmacy, the grocery store, the property has to be within a set distance. Normally, it was a mile, and then they changed it to five miles. So if we have identified a property and it's not within that, and somebody else comes in with another property, right, that's in that whole spectrum of the five miles and meets all those, so they're going to get points. So one of the things, you know, looking at our local developers and talking to them is just how can we make this the best for the city of Kingman, or so the city of Kingman would have the best chance on Mojave County if that's something the Board of Supervisors want to look at in the future? How does that fit within that Qualified Allocation Plan? That's something that you definitely could meet with the developer on. I know we did bring a developer to the city last year. They did lease, they did put an offer on some property. They didn't move forward because once again, they did the totals of the Qualified Allocation Plan, and they're like, yeah, it's not going to score out. So they're not going to move forward with the project when they know at that time it's not going to score out. Are they still excited about working in the city of Kingman? And are they interested? They are definitely interested. And I would just note that the reason why it's so hard in regards to Lytec is just to kind of close that picture for you, is that to really be able to qualify for this program, the 9%, is that you've had to have built at least one project before on your own or been part of a group. So if you've never built before, or somebody says, I'm a developer and I want to build a Lytec, I can do it, I built everything under the sun, they would say, that's great, but you don't qualify because you haven't built within our program, right? They want to see a proven product. So there are lists of developers that have built within the state of Arizona, and you can find that online. Or like I said, there are two developers that I know, the Han Group as well as the Dominion Group. The Dominion Group built a beautiful facility in Bullhead. It's, I think it's 66 units. It's getting ready to come online a month early, under budget. So that was a great project that they're finishing up down there. So in a nutshell, there's a lot of things here, but how do we get to that next step? So what would be actionable items, right? Actionable items would be, A, you look at your city and you say, where are there properties that we could build? If that was what you decided to do as a council? So all right, we've identified those areas. Next would be identifying, you know, through an RFP, you could ask somebody to come in and give you a request for a proposal to build one, and you could put your requirements as such to that particular piece of property. And then once you have that developer, really just working with them through the process of saying, all right, this is how we want to see it, and they'll develop the property. Normally, you know, how the city or the municipality would like to see it done. But in a nutshell, that would be Lytec, and like, I'm saying, this is a very overview. But if you look at that Qualified Allocation Plan and really want to move forward, I would recommend reaching out to a developer and having those conversations. And like I said, if you're interested, I could share the two developers. One is Ted Guzman from Dominion, I mentioned that, as well as Justin Francis from the Han Group. Both of them have built in Bullhead. And then the other question that we always get, people say, well, the Lytec, isn't that like, you know, I've heard about those buildings, and I've heard about those situations, and I've heard about the crime rates and the different things that go with that. And I would just mention that when you think of those, if you get a chance and you've gone to Bullhead sometime, and you're going down over the hill, you'll see off to the right, it's called Catherine Landing. They're duplexes. And I'll tell you what, I'll raise my hand right now and say, I would gladly live there in a heartbeat. They're very nice apartments. I believe they have a swimming pool. I've seen the inside of some of the apartments. It's really how they upkeep and take care of them. And then when you think of a local opportunity here of what you've done in Kingman and what the county did, another development that you could look towards, it's similar, but it's a little different, would be the project-based Lytec program that the Veterans Villas, that the 54 units that the county did for the project-based facility there. So in a nutshell, that's what it would look like. And so when you think about it, affordability, like who would fall into this area, or who would rent in a Lytec development? It could be somebody who could be your senior citizens, frail senior citizen, some people that may have had a husband that now they're a widow, or they lost that other income, things of that nature that would fit into that. So it's 30 to, you know, 60% of sometimes area median income, depending on the developer's portfolio and the way they get there. So I would just conclude with, in a nutshell, you really have to put all that together to make it work. I mean, it really takes a lot, and it's a lot of planning and programming, but it can be done if somebody wants to do it. And they have built two beautiful facilities in Bullhead as of late. And I'm open, and just to give you one other statistic, there's about 20 units within the Mojave County, and Kingman, I believe, has six units at this time that are Lytec developments. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you, Michael. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Comments? Counselor Staley?
I asked to have this presentation because you had talked about how good Bullhead is about making this program work for their community. Are there any other best practices that they're using to see, you know, new projects come in every year, other than just kind of what you've mentioned, working with your economic development and a builder?
So the city of Bullhead, I believe, all the things that I kind of mentioned and laid out, they met those measures, right? And so when you think about that, it's important to meet those measures. And once again, they started the process before this Qualified Allocation Plan. So I don't remember exactly the points they scored on the Qualified Allocation Plan. I can tell you that within the county, there was two developments that had the same score. And that was, the tiebreaker was the amount of units that was actually developed, right? So that's one of the tiebreakers that they used. Best practices, really, it's going through that process, right? Finding that property that the city has or a developer can come in, purchase at a reasonable rate to be able to put those Lytec buildings on there to make it successful. But it's going to be interesting seeing how the new plan plays out, right? Because I know a lot of people have expressed frustration the past two years with the way the current Qualified Allocation Plan is, because like I said, it does favor the southern part of the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being here tonight.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? I wanted to thank you as well for coming. We've talked a lot about this, you and I, so I would like to see if we could give staff direction. I'd like to see us start identifying those areas, and I would also like to see if Manager Walsh would reach out to Bullhead and just see, have them walk you through how they got through the process so we can continue to move this conversation forward. And if we have to have a workshop about the properties that you've identified or whatnot, I think that would be a good starting point.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, department reports. 7B, we have the legislative update. Do we have Mr. Dorn on the line?
I believe so. I know he was in session. He said he'd be logging in as soon as we gave him the update, so just sent it over and said, log in now. But I know he's been working all day for us. They actually had a water bill in committee today that he was speaking on our behalf. So fighting a good fight, but he should be logging on here shortly if we.
Is it okay to go to announcements?
I think we could go through that while we're waiting, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, perfect. Are there any announcements by mayor, council members, or city managers? Counselor, or sorry, Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No announcements today, thank you.
All right, Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Savage?
I heard there was amazing performance put on by the Bealestee Street Actors and Actresses that was called Savages. I'm sorry I missed that. I wish I could have been there.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ward? Counselor Staley? Counselor Dykens? All right, I have a couple. The city of Kingman Fire Department has their Badge of Courage Basketball Game on Wednesday, February 26th at 7:00 PM. It's a fundraiser. Proceeds will go towards the Lee Williams High School Scholarship Fund. So this fund provides students with more opportunities as they pursue their education goals. All Lee Williams staff and students will get in for free. Other community members will pay $5, and children 12 and under are $1. So there'll be half-court shots with prizes as well as performance from the Lee Williams Spirit Line. And so go out and support your Kingman Police Department and Kingman Fire Department. And then there is a guided hike that is being put on by our Parks and Rec Department Saturday, March 1st, and you can find all that information online at the Parks and Rec website. All right.
He is logging in right now. But just, I think it might be, not that I'm trying to kill time, but the guided hike, I think it might be good to have Mike come up and share a lot. The point of the guided hike, they've done a lot of work downtown on all these new trails, and I think it's, it'll be a great opportunity to really show all the good work that they've done and educate our citizens on the trails that are there.
So we had Tom just log in, so.
Okay, I'll be quick. Yeah, that's what it is. We're trying to promote more and more about the trails we have. We have a lot of beautiful trails, and I've been challenging our Recreation Department to get more use on the trails by our program, so that's what it is.
All right, and it is Saturday, March 1st. I don't know if I gave that date, from 10 to 1. All right, thank you, Mike. All right, Mr. Dorn, welcome.
Hello, Madam Vice Mayor. Hello, Council. Hello from the Capitol. It's been a very long day, and it's still ongoing. There's about four or five committees still active. Just wanted to give you an update on things down here, but first I'll start with the water legislation that just happened. It did pass out. I testified on behalf of the city in opposition. I tried to focus more on the economic development angle, that, you know, farming is not something the city is pursuing within its city limits. You have a much broader economic development picture for your future, and unfortunately, the activities of the Wallopi Basin have an impact on that. So I tried to give a unique perspective on this legislation, and others testified from rural Arizona. So we had a good representation, but at the bottom line, it cut out a committee four to three, as expected, along party lines, knowing that the governor and the legislature just aren't going to meet, have consensus on this at this point. So any specific questions on the water legislation?
Counsel? Any questions? This is, you're speaking of the bill, the Republican bill?
Yeah, the Republican, 1520, it was a striker by Senator Tim Dunn of Yuma. The Rural Water Working Group opposed it. City of Kingman, we opposed it. Mojave County opposed it. Others around the state, certain organizations, and of course, all the Democrats spoke against it also. But yeah, it was the usual suspects. It's the same thing as 1221 as last year, a little bit of changes here and there, but, you know, the composition of the councils, as we have shared and discussed many times over, it, I mean, interests from outside of the city of Kingman, outside of Mojave County itself, could be on this and then make decisions that would impact groundwater for the city of Kingman moving forward. So we have good arguments. I'm trying not to repeat other people's arguments, trying to make them unique to Kingman, as I already said. And so it was received, and they proceeded to still vote along party lines, as expected. And we'll have more for your day at the Capitol, which I can talk about real quickly. We have Ben Alternator, who was the, he's the deputy legislative person for the Department of Water Resources, got him scheduled to meet with you, as well as folks on the Arizona Commerce Authority, working on the Office of Tourism, as well as ADOT. Hope to have them all spend some time with you, all of you that are coming down for that. that, as well as our meeting with the legislative delegation over lunch. So should be a good day, should be a good day. And I'll give Mr. Walsh the tentative agenda after I have it updated with a few more confirmations, but look forward to seeing you all next Tuesday.
All right, I think Counselor Staley had a comment or a question?
Yeah, just a question on this water bill. Can you tell us where our three local representatives stand on this particular item?
Madam Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Staley, I, well, Senator Angus, she is working with us. She understands the concerns, not just for the city of Kingman. She's not on that committee, but, so I haven't talked to her directly about it with the city issues, but she has been with rural Arizona, and I feel that, I know La Paz County's been working with her on it, Mojave County also, and her relationship and knowledge from having been a supervisor, so she's, I fully expect her to be with us. And I was talking to her today about another issue, but I did not bring this up. Mr. Gillette, he, he's frustrated with a lot of things that we've been dealing with on this, and so remains to be seen where he comes down. I had a hallway conversation with him yesterday, and so I wouldn't want to speak for him on where he is on specific language, but no one is in support of anything as it's written right now. And Representative Biassucci, I have not talked to him directly about it over the last few weeks, but I know that he has, you know, he's still probably where we're at, but I have nothing firm to comment on where he may be. He also has worked very closely with the entire delegation, as you know, so I don't expect that his positions have changed much.
Thank you. Tom, has the other water bill moved through committee?
Madam Vice Mayor, are you talking about the Agda Urban?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that moved through.
Or the Governor's, no, the Governor's bill.
Oh, the Governor, oh, no, no, no. Madam Vice Mayor, no, those, I don't even know if they were signed. If they were assigned, they're certainly not going to be heard, but the Democrats did speak up, saying that there were some bills that might have more bipartisan support if they were given an opportunity to be heard, so.
Okay. So there's still no bipartisan support for any bill? It's early.
Madam Vice Mayor, yeah. Madam Vice Mayor, Counsel, at this time, I would say no. It's a little early, it's only February, and, you know, with the whole budget discussion still out there to be had, and water, of course, will be used as leverage in that. It'll be interesting to see how that water, along with other issues, but, yeah, it's a little too early, I think, for an agreement, because it's the biggest leverage both parties have.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, and Tom, please correct me if I'm wrong, but in speaking with the county and high ground, they're lobbyists on water, it appears that while this bill that was presented is obviously not ideal or not where we want to be, there is the sentiment that coming from Senator Dunn and working with Senator Angus, that there is an opportunity or a belief that there is room to perfect that bill and get it to where we do, where we are comfortable with it and where we can, you know, at least support it. So we're working really closely with our Mojave County friends to get to that point to where we get that bill where we need it to be.
And this is Bill 1520?
That is the one that, yeah, that's the one that was dropped Friday and then was heard today in committee.
All right. Why didn't you give us that good news, Tom?
Yeah, and Madam Vice Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Marsh, I mean, Mr. Walsh, sorry. The, the, yes, that is true, because Mr. Dunn seems to be maybe a little more open to some of those changes, and may have, since he's more, you know, he comes from Yuma, where Sina Kerr had more of, well, she's agriculture and rural and a farmer. She has that urban interface, being from Buckeye, so she had a lot of the home builders and the economic development folks of the West Valley really kind of pushing. And so I just think there is, there's something about, they're both fantastic to work with, obviously, but I think that there is some truth to what you put out there in the beginning. And that also was communicated in some of the testimony tonight, that today, tonight, that people are optimistic that maybe we can actually get something done, something. And with, also with TJ Schob as the chairman of the committee this go-around, he's very, he's determined to get something done with the Agda Urban for Pinal County, and which also would be Queen Creek, but Buckeye on the west side of the valley. So there, he's pretty determined, and I think somehow the rural issues are going to have to, rural Arizona's going to have to get something out of the water discussions if Agda Urban is going to happen for Schob and Pinal County, plus Buckeye.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you so much for stepping away. Thanks for your time, and we'll see you next week.
Okay, sounds great. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye. All right, council requests for future reports and updates. Does council have any requests? Counselor Staley?
I would like to request a report on community facilities districts, and I'd also be interested in other types of improvement districts that we could apply to the Kingman Crossing area, and if you could include what that process looks like, the timeline, and what properties could be reasonably included in that district. And then I'd also like to request a second report on what it would look like to put out an RFQ or an RFP for a commercial developer to facilitate the construction of our half of the interchange at Kingman Crossing, as well as the retail shopping center on the south side, the city-owned land. So what those, what that would look like, and if it's possible.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other requests for reports? All right, executive session. Kingman Crossing Development Agreement. Staff requests that council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 to discuss Kingman Crossing Development Agreement, discussion and/or action. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Five-minute break.